Okay, I'd like to call the February 5th, 2025 Border Selectments Meeting to order at 6:30. There is no need for a non-public session. The first item on the agenda is the January 22nd, 2025 Border Selectments Minutes. Does anybody have any corrections or changes?
I have one.
Okay, Brad?
Page 11.
Yep.
Very top of the page.
Yep.
Second line down, between the words "been" and "maintenance," I want to add "very little." So that would read, because it shows that there's been very little maintenance on the road.
Okay. Well, we're on that page. If you go to page 10, and you see the italicized sentence down about five, and then if you go down 1, 2, 3, it should say this one that says, "We have declared an emergency," and it should say "Lane." And then, coming up, if you look at RSA 231:59, you come down 10, let's count them. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. The ninth line in, it'll say "U-GIS map." You go down, and it says "coming down," and you need to insert "old Lakeview Drive." And those are mine. Paul, did you say you have some?
Yeah, I do. On page 11.
Yep.
Three-quarters of the way down the page, attribution to myself. Halfway down the paragraph, there's two instances of the word "I wanna." And I'd like to, I wanna.
I wanna, wanna?
I want to make it a little more professional and say, "I want to."
Okay.
I don't think that changes the intent. So there's two of those, and that's all I have. Thank you.
I have page 8, the first reference to Mr. Duchesne. And we need to swap "state and town" with "town and state" on the first sentence. A lawsuit against the "town by the state" is not a certainty.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Yeah, they got them backwards.
Just switch them around.
Switch them around.
Okay. Any other changes? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to accept as amended?
Move to accept the January 22nd minutes as amended.
Okay, I have a motion by Paul, a second by Dave. Any further discussion? Paul, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Because I was involved in the Warren article petition, and it is, some of it was, just didn't sit with me well. I don't want to approve the minutes.
Okay, so you're saying no. All right. Next item on the agenda is the public hearings. I'll read the first one. "The Wolfboro Border Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to consider temporary event permit application for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to host concert yacht, a concert model yacht regatta on Tuesday, rain date..."
Wednesday.
Thursday, a Wednesday, and then Thursday, April 29th, 2025, through October 28th, 2025, from 12 noon to 4 p.m. at 95 Glendon Street. Glendon Street parking lot and Bridge Falls Path, permit 2025-11. I'll open up the public hearing. Is there anybody here to speak to that?
There's one for, one's for the Back Bay Skipper Seasable, and there should have been a second one.
There are three of them for you.
Yes, and so for the Back Bay Skipper Seasable, on use of the Bridge Falls Path, where we put out the dock. And then the second one for Back Bay Skipper was the footy regatta.
Yeah, we're gonna do, we're doing the first one.
Okay.
Which is the one that goes on from April to October.
Okay, I just want to make sure. I thought I heard the other one mixed into it, so I wanted to make sure we did it right.
You want to tell people a little bit about it?
They've been an institution on Back Bay for years now. They're very popular. They come out on Tuesdays and Thursdays and race their model yachts. They're very popular. People go down just to watch. They're very open to teaching people how to sail. And it's just a great program. We've been featured on New Hampshire Chronicle and also on Boston Chronicle.
It's nice. You get to watch them all go down and all come back. All righty. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this temporary event permit? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'll make a motion. I think, Lynda, what the confusion is, is I think that we had a word in here, "concerts," and I don't think that that's supposed to be in here. I think it was.
Well, that's why I was having trouble.
Yeah, I'm sitting here too.
What in the world?
No concerts.
I think it's probably left over from one that was concerts at the...
Yeah.
Cape Park or something like that.
Well, and also, we didn't have Wednesday abbreviation. When is one?
When? I'll do my best with this.
Will you correct it when you read it?
Yeah. Okay, so I will move to approve a temporary event permit application for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to host model yacht regattas on Tuesday. Wednesday is a rain date, and Thursdays, from April 29th, 2025, through October 28th, 2025, from 12 noon to 4 p.m. at the 95 Street, Glendon Street parking lot and Bridge Falls Path. Do you have a rain date for the Thursdays?
No.
Permit number 2025-11.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Brian, a second by Paul. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's hope this one's better. I'll open up the next public hearing. "The Wolfboro Border Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to consider a temporary event permit application for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to ho, to hold the Sasquatch chick..."
Sasquatch.
Sasquatch footy regatta on June 14th, 2025, from 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. at 95 Glendon Street. Glendon Street parking lot and Bridge Falls Path, permit number 2025-12. So I'll open up that public hearing.
So this is a one-day regatta that they hold. They invite other people. The Sasquatch footy is because the boats are 12 inches long, and it's very competitive. They like their bragging rights. Whoever gets to win. It's a fun event, and again, people are more than welcome to come down and watch.
Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to make a comment for this permit? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Board members?
I'm up again. So it says "squatch footy regatta," so I gotta add a sash into it. I move to approve a temporary event permit application for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to host the Sasquatch footy regatta on June 14th, 2025, from 8 a.m. to 4 p.m. at 95 Glendon Street, the Glendon Street parking lot and Bridge Falls Path. No rain date.
No rain date.
Permit number 2025-12.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Brian, a second by Brad. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty, I'll open up the next public hearing. "The Wolfboro Border Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, January 8th, 2025, at 6:30 p.m. to consider a temporary event permit application for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to host the New Hampshire Boat Museum Boat House Tour on August 14th, 2025, rain date August 15th, 2025, from 7 a.m. to 5 p.m. at the town dock, closing use of one dock, permit 2025-13."
So the Boat House Tour was an extremely popular event for the boat museum prior to COVID. And, you know, when COVID happened, they stopped doing it. And no matter what event we hold, we have at least three to four people come up and say, "When are you bringing back the Boat House Tour?" So we would like to bring back the Boat House Tour this year. We only want to use the dock at the very far end, which would be just one dock. The times they put down, because we'd like to do our first pickup time at 9, and then the second pickup time, I think it's like 12 or 1. And so I put 7 just to make things easier, so we don't have confusion of somebody parking there and then trying to get them to move. But if you have a suggestion on times, we're open to that. And we, it's, we were gonna also make sure we encourage parking in the municipal lots, use Somali the trolley, so we don't, you know, have people crowding the downtown dock area.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to make any comment on this? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. And I guess the question is, how we're gonna mark off that one dock for this event, and who will do that?
We are more than willing to do it, and we can do it in conjunction with, you know, you approving what signs we make and what time we hang them up.
I think that, that sounds good to me. Anybody else have any issue with that? You can check it out with Steve Randall.
Okay.
And he'll give you whoever is down there.
Lynda, I have just one or two thoughts. One is, if you don't have somebody there watching that dock...
Oh, we will.
People will still park there. If you have signs or you put caution tape or stuff, people, during the middle of someone that's busy, people will park there.
No, we will have dock attendants help, because we want to help people get in and out of the boats.
And what boats do you use for the tour?
We use volunteers' boats. They're, most are antique wooden boats, but we did have a participant that had an antique fiberglass boat. And I believe we will be using the Millie B. I'm not, I'm not sure on that, but we do use volunteers' boats.
Okay, just curious.
Yeah.
People at home might be interested.
Anybody, any other selectmen have any comments? Hearing none. Can somebody make a motion?
Come on, Brian, you're on a roll.
I move to approve a temporary event permit application for the New Hampshire Boat Museum to host the New Hampshire Boat Museum Boat House Tour on August 14th, 2025, rain date August 15th, 2025. What days of the week is that?
Thursday and Friday.
Thursday and Friday. So Thursday, August 14th, 2025, and Friday, August 15th, 2025, from 7 a.m. to 5 p.m. at the town docks, closing use of one dock, permit number 2025-13.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Brian, a second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, we have another public hearing. I'll open that public hearing. "The Wolfboro Border Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, February 5th, 2025, at approximately 6:30 p.m. at the Great Hall Town Hall, 84 South Main Street, Wolfboro, New Hampshire, for the acceptance of an unanticipated donation in the amount that is over $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3A, relative to donations received for last night Wolfboro event, in the amount, and I'm gonna change the amount, we raised more than what is listed here, is $13,437.03. There was one little girl who gave us 3 cents. And I'll, I will speak to this public hearing. Last night, Wolfboro was able to raise $13,437.03, and I'm gonna read you all the sponsors that took part in this event. Bisquada Way Landscaping, Blacks Paper Store, Taylor Community, Wind Drift Resort, Lake Winnie Team, Hunter Shop and Save, Wolfboro Dock Company, Leoni McDonald &amp; Roberts, Paul Zimmerman, Duran Insurance, Brewster, Beyond the Box, Edward Jones, Lawler Office, Back Bay Clothing, WCYC Marine Services, Wolfboro Car Wash, Camp Patrol, Dive Winna Pasaki, Wolfboro Casual, Wolfboro Community Food Co-op, Harmony Coffee House, Brookside Plumbing and Heating, Waters Edge Salon, Marcy's Porch and Pub, Yankee Peddler Real Estate, Realtors, Winnie Paul Station, Bradley's Hardware, Martha Trepanier, Nancy Hirschberg, Avery Insurance, Maxfield Real Estate, Jeff McGinnis, Raymond James, Top of the Hill Farm, Wetworth Inn, and KW Realty. The Wolfboro Area Children's Center paid for Wildlife Encounters. J.C. Signs gave us a discount on a new banner. The First Congregational Church let us use their building for free. Brewster Academy let us use Estorbrook Hall for bingo at no charge. The Lions Club ran the bingo. The Yum Yum Shop donated cookies. Community TV did interviews and taped some of the events. We received some tickets and gift certificates as door prizes, or it really were the prizes for the scavenger hunt. And that came from the Wolfboro Trolley Company, the Wright Museum, the Boat Museum, the Mount Washington Cruise Company, Winnie Paul Station, and we received in cash $1,116.03. And with all those donations, we're able to put on the fireworks and pay the performers, and we had a great year, many different events. And this gives us the seed money for next year, so we can pay for the events before the event goes on. So I want to thank all those donors. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak to this public hearing? Hearing none. I'll close the public hearing. Board members? I need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the unanticipated donation in an amount that is over $10,000 in accordance with RSA 3195-B3A, relative to donations received for last night Wolfboro events in the amount of $13,437.03.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Brad, a second by Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'll abstain. So it'll be 4 to 1, 1 abstention. Okay, next item on the agenda is the bulk vote. The Weekly Manifest, January 24th, 2025, it was $107,427.34. January 31st, $2,081,763.22, and that had a school payment. We have an intent to cut, we have property tax abatement. We have a couple land use change tax. We have property tax credits. And the last one is the results of the 2024 equalize, equalization. It's a final ratio, and the final ratio was 52.1 for 2024. And if anybody would like to see this, I'm assuming this is in the, do you have that, Casey or Sam? Or is that in the assessing department? Assessing, you go to the assessing department to get that document. All right, board members, are there any issues or concerns on this?
Just a comment. The, it was a question about the intent to cut on Pine Hill Road. The assessor's office has been in contact with the state. It seems like the wood was cut before this permit has been approved. So that, that's gonna take place in terms of the state reaching out to the person who did the cutting. That's all.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Can I have a motion?
I'll move that we approve the bulk vote A through F.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Dave, a second by Brad. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Next item, we're gonna go down to new business 5, fund balance policy.
Sam.
Good evening. Sam Kelly, Finance Director. I'm here to have you review the fund balance policy, FIN-007. This was originally brought to you at your December 30th special meeting. And at that time, there were some questions that we were still looking into, so it was tabled. So I am here to bring it forth again for approval. There's been no changes to the policy from last year. If you have any questions?
Yeah, and you answered the questions that you were, were asked.
Yes, they should be in your packet.
I, yeah, I just want to, so the public hears that.
We are still waiting to hear back from the DRA. We have a couple of emails out to them.
Okay.
So I know that was the final piece to answer Paul's question, one of his questions.
Okay.
Can I speak to this?
Yeah, you can.
First of all, thank you, Sam. Very kind of you to write the letter. I had three questions that I put on the record. First question is, you know, what is our unrestricted fund balance policy? And the answer to that question is 8%. And that's in the, in the document. That's good. I, I think based upon what I saw last night and heard, I think we need to, we need to, we need to help others understand how government fund accounting works. It's a little different than business fund accounting. And I think that's, that's something that we should, as the year goes on, explain this, because the fund balance is not a checkbook. Not. It's retained earnings of, of the town. It's going our way down once a year. That's how it works. And we should endeavor to help each other understand that. So that was my first question. My third question was, was there a motion made by the board as a result of the DRA's cease spending order, my words, last year, that said that the board would, would only use fund balance for paying down, buying down the tax rate? The answer is, there wasn't a motion, but there was a letter. And it was signed by, I wasn't on the board, so all these other folks who were on the board signed the letter. I'll just, I won't bore you with it, but I'll read the last sentence, because I think that's pertinent. The last sentence of the letter that was sent to the Department of Revenue Administration by, by the, on January 17th of '24, went on to explain, you know, the situation with the Pop Whalen and all that stuff. But the last sentence in the letter, I think, is, is what I was asking for. It says, quote, "In the future, the town will strive to use any unassigned fund balance for the purpose of setting the annual tax rate rather than for warrant article projects." Signed by Harriman, Croydenburg, Duchesne, Murray, Senical, and then cosigned by the town manager. So I still have one other question that's open. I'm not gonna stand here and ask us to keep tabling it, but I do want to make sure that question gets answered, and I want to bring it back to the board. That's okay?
Well, why don't you tell the public what the question is?
Sure. The question, I read this one into the record too, a while ago. I just gotta find the bloody thing. Oh, here we go. Let me just get it here. Sam, do you have the question?
I do.
You do? You want me to read it?
Are you?
You want me to read it, or you want to read it?
It's up to you.
I thought it was attached to my packet here. Hang on.
As it relates to enterprise funds, we have two funds, sewer and Pop Whalen, which consistently exceed their annual budget, resulting in general fund access. Could you please provide the actual vote, votes that were taken that codified the ability of these enterprise funds to exceed their budgets every year? And could you please seek an opinion from DRA as to whether this annual issue is consistent with DRA's advice on enterprise funds? The result of your investigation should be added to the fund balance policy.
So the reason I ask that question is, again, we have business entities, these enterprise funds, and two of them are, you know, are exceeding their, their annual budget. There was no vote, this is from Sam, "There was no vote taken in regard to enterprise, enterprise funds exceeding their budgets resulting in a deficit at year end." No vote was ever taken. So it sounds like we have a practice here. We don't have a policy. Because these enterprise funds, because these are enterprise funds, they are self-supported and are accounted for like a business. That's what they are. Sam verified with our auditors that there is no requirement to fund an enterprise fund deficit from the general fund. However, voters could always transfer funds from the general fund to the enterprise fund, but it's not something that is done automatically. So at the end of the year, when the auditor comes through and does his or her thing, there are some transfers that go back and forth, and that's legitimate. It's purposeful. Deficits can accumulate, but in doing so, it becomes an issue of an ongoing concern for the enterprise fund. So the message behind this one is, I suppose, I would not be a big fan of this. I suppose we could say, "We're not gonna back up any of our enterprise funds and let them become a going concern problem." I don't think that's prudent policy. So we do back them up, okay? And Sam said she was gonna reach out to DRA regarding, is there any guidance they can give us? Because these things are, I hate to use the word chronic, but it's the only word I can come up with. These things chronically are, are, you know, are requiring topping off from the general fund. So I just want to, I want us all to understand that, because those monies that are being, you know, brought in are taxpayer dollars. And we, before my time, and I think maybe before the rest of my colleagues' time, a practice, I believe, was established that said, "Debt for the sewer operation is gonna be carried by general taxation." Is that kind of what the practice?
Yes, there is. I went back. There was, I think it was before I came on the board, around 2004, there was a meeting, no, I think it was in 2005. It was a special meeting. And there was a motion on the floor to pay, to have half buy the users and half buy the general fund, and that motion failed.
Yeah.
And Warren article was all, the money was all in the general fund. That was the only thing I could find, because that was just as I was coming on. But every year, when we do the warrant article, it is clear that that money is coming out of the general fund, even though it's for the sewer.
Yeah.
And so my, my question would be, okay, by the warrant articles, the voters are proving it to come from the general fund, but is the operation of that enterprise fund paying for itself?
Right.
I think those are two different things.
I agree. So I, I'm gonna, with the, unless, unless somebody objects, I want to park this one, the second question that I asked about enterprise funds and water, sewer and pop. And we need to, I just want to continue to understand that a little more, me personally. It's not the pleasure of the board. You can just, you know, entertain me by myself. I would like to ask if this board is interested in having a conversation about, and there's, there's only a couple of towns that I looked at. I didn't do exhaustive research on this, but I've looked out at other towns in the state of New Hampshire. And some towns have a policy that says, if the unrestricted fund balance percentage goes above a number, I'm gonna use this one, 8%, then anything north of 8% goes right to buy down the tax rate. Would the board be interested in having that conversation and putting it into a motion, or?
I think that's what that Warren article was saying. It didn't use 8, it used 10. That anything above 10% had to be to bill, buy down the tax rate.
So are we saying anything above 10% goes to buy down the tax rate? The first 10% we get to do anything else with?
I think that that was the policy of the voters, and I would make that our policy. We can decide to put more money towards it. It just can't exceed that.
So that's kind of what, I kind of go into this space and say, if you reduced it from 10 down to 8, then the voter, the voter actually gets a benefit, right? There's a benefit by taking it, anything north of 8 goes to buy down the tax rate, as opposed to saying anything north of 10 goes to buy down the tax. The voter actually gets a benefit if you reduce it. I would not support, and by the way, congratulations to our team. You know, we all know that we're supposed to, you know, conform to some kind of analog. The Government Finance Officers Association says we should be 8%. We're there, and the New Hampshire DRA, they wiggle waggle, I'm not disrespectful to them. They, they, they say it's a toggle between 7 and 15, or 7 and 4. We're in there.
5 to 7.
Well, they changed. There was one, there was one in 2019 that was different. So they, they, they... So they, they, they change it around, but we're, we're within the spectrum. So would the board want to reduce the eight, the ten percent to eight percent and say anything north of eight? We should use for buy down on the taxes?
I think we need to look at it and look at an analysis and look at how, how we have spent it. You know, I, I think it is a good policy, if we can, to put a certain amount to buy down the tax rate each year. And so if you take a target number, then everything above that does it. But I'm not quite sure what that target number is. We know for a fact that we have to do it by voters over ten. So we might want to, if we wanted to look at it and look at the ramifications of looking between eight and ten, or whatever the number is, Brian?
Yeah, so I've put in a call for the exact same subject to the New Hampshire Municipal Association, asked them some questions about the enterprise funds, how they're funded, what can be funded, and, and then I got a very unsatisfactory answer. Didn't seem like he, the person at the municipal association was a hundred percent certain of what his answer was. So then I did call D R A, and I have, I'm waiting for an answer from them to figure out what portion of sewer operations expense, meaning the whole ball of wax, what portions are, are funded by which mechanisms? Which can be funded with bonds, with state revolving loans, with general taxation, with the enterprise fund? So I, I'm trying to get that just from my own brain, so I understand what's going on.
So I'm going to continue, unless somebody tells me, I'm going to continue to direct my questions to the, the people east of us or west of us through Sam, uh, so that we don't get crosswired. I'll, I'll do that through you. So I think I hear, Linda, you're saying, let's, let's chew on the eight percent question.
Yeah, maybe we need to put the policy, because it was voted in, in our policy, the ten percent, and then doing that, then we can take it. And I'd like to look at an analysis of where we've been and, and it also did, and see how we've done, how we, over X number of years, what has been the unassigned fund balance? You know, have we been consistent? Have we gone up and down? I just would like to have some analysis behind making a change.
So question number one is, you know, we need to kind of sort, should we be at ten? Should we be at eight? What's the right number? And that's kind of a working thing we should do. That then kind of makes my question number three, which is, you know, did the board create a motion as a result of the D R A's cease, my words, cease spending order? Well, you didn't, but you actually said, we're not going to spend any, any money unless, unassigned fund balance unless it's for warrant articles. So I, I think we've gotten now a practice to say, we're not doing that, which is good, clarity. We may change it, but it's clarity. And so the third question, which I think Brian's, you know, chewing on this one, and I'd ask that you just help us through it, is, is there any guidance that says, and I know we were going to get an answer. I think you got one from somebody that said, the auditor, I think Tim said, you know, the guidance is run the business, right? Manage the business and try to avoid having to go over, in a, in a, whatever the right word is, deficit mode. That, that may be one.
Well, and, and then I look at the sewer fund, and because the size of it, it cannot, with a number of people, without just huge, huge increases in, in the unit rate and to afford it. And that was, that was the kind of stuff we talked about.
Yeah.
And it's with Pop Whalen, we had a vote about it before we even put the bond, uh, warrant article for Pop Whalen out. It was a year prior. Would you be willing to have that, that capital be come out of the general fund?
Eighty-six percent of it come out of general?
Right. At that point, when we asked the question, the eighty-six percent came later. I don't think that one, but I'd have to look at it. But it was asked, the voters approved it. You know, um, we do not have that kind of a vote out of the sewer fund, but I can go back to that one meeting where there was some kind of conversation about it. Yep?
And I have one, one last thing. Because we're talking about the fund balance policy, I'd like to enter into the minutes a document that I received on December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, which is subject warrant article eighteen, partial disallowance. It was sent to me by a gentleman named Adam Denno Kerr from D R A with the approval from Samuel Green, who is the head of D R A, and Lawrence Gagnon, who is their head legal counsel. And it's just another explanation.
Well, then I, I would like a copy of it, and the whole board should have a copy. And then at the next set of minutes, attach it to the minutes. I'm not willing to attach something I haven't seen, we haven't talked about. So if you want, if you want to get a copy, let us all have the copy so we at least can read it.
Okay. And then we can. I, I believe it was forwarded to you before, but, but you don't have it now.
We, you got people here, and you're asking for something, and I think it's only fair that we see it. And I don't have any problem attaching it after I've read it, if, if it's relevant. How do other board members feel?
I agree. I think, you know, we should see it in our packets. We get a chance to review it and have a discussion about it, and then it automatically ends up in the minutes at that point. So I think that's the proper way to go, go to, through it.
And Dave, you're the same way? Okay. Brian, just get it, and I'll get it down to the next one.
I'll give this to, for the board packet too, because I, after last evening, it, um, it, it became clearer to me that, that, and maybe I'm wrong, because normally I am. It became very clear to me that we, we really got to get our heads around, what is this thing we call the unassigned fund balance? It's not a checkbook. It is, it is, in, in my world, it's called retained earnings. It's, it's the, it's the, it's the subtraction of everything we owe from everything we own. And what falls out the bottom is either a surplus or a deficit. That's it. That's how it's defined. It's not working capital. It's, it's, it's assets minus, it's revenues minus expenses. Boom. And you get it, you get a surplus, you get a deficit. And I think, and it's done, I think it's done once a year, Sam? Is it like done at, at the audit? You can't go in there like tomorrow and count. You could, I suppose, but isn't it done at, at the audit? Yeah, it's on page twenty. I think, Linda, you referenced it yesterday. Page twenty of the audit. All right? And, and, and if you think about it, you know, Brenda sends out the tax bills, we get all that revenue in, and then we spend it. Tax bill's going again. But meanwhile, we spend every week, every month, about two million bucks. So it's a cash flow, and I think, Linda, you use the word cash flow thing. It's a cash flow thing. But at the end of this all, costs and assets, sum them all together, and outcomes, one or the other. It's a fund balance. Okay. I'll, so I'll give this to you, Linda, if you wouldn't, or somebody to put in our minutes too, because this is kind of primer on, on this, we put it in the packet.
Put it in the packet with that one. We'll put the two together for next.
I'm emailing like Amy right now. Okay. All right. I'll give it to her. Sam, we having fun?
Are you referencing the take the mystery out of?
Yes.
I can forward it to Amy tomorrow.
Okay, good. Sam, Sam has a copy of this. And she's going to forward it over to Amy to make sure it gets put into the packet. Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay. Now, we have a motion that I think you would like, Sam. And does anybody want to do the motion on the bottom of the first page? Does anybody want to make that motion?
Nah, I don't want to do it.
Okay.
I'll do it.
I'll move.
Go ahead.
I'll move to approve the fund balance policy, F I N dash zero zero seven, revised zero zero, as recommended by the Finance Director.
Second.
Okay. I made the motion. Paul, Paul second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye. I abstain until my document is included in the minutes next meeting.
So four to one.
Sam, thank you again.
You're welcome.
Okay.
We're not done.
All righty. The next, the next item is our water and sewer rate structure update. Steve, you want to lead this off?
Good evening. Steve Randall, Director of Public Works. So we are here tonight with Underwood Engineering to give our yearly update to the rates for Water and Sewer Department and what that's going to look like going forward. They've got a nice PowerPoint to go through. I'll let them explain it better, but this will encompass what we've got for C I P over the next few years and what we have. And I'll turn it over to Keith.
Thanks, Steve. Good evening. I know some of you, but good to be here again. My name's Keith Pratt, President of Underwood Engineers, and I've been working on your, several things at the department for many years, and your rates since two thousand and thirteen, actually. Desmond Cager's with me, and he helped me on, on this rate, rate model. So I'll run through a summary of what we did, and then be happy to answer any questions. Okay. Okay. Great. Uh, good. Great, thank you. Yes, Steve reached out and, and asked that we do another, a review, because some, some of the changes and proposals he had set up in his capital programs for water and sewer. So we were asked to, to do a, a check-in on the last major update we did in two thousand and twenty-two to, to see how the rates could support what's being proposed. So we looked at the expenses and the capital plan through two thousand and twenty-seven, and these included rate adjustments to support the capital plan on the Water and Sewer Department. Got to go the other way. Historically, like I said, we've been involved since two thousand and thirteen. These are the rate recommendations that we've made over the years. I'm pointing out here that generally, we try to establish rates with some uniformity and consistency, so we don't have certain rate shock. And this is a history of the recommendations we've made since two thousand and eighteen and what was done in actuality. And the town's been pretty great in supporting these rate adjustments for the department. I think there were some COVID years in twenty-one and twenty-two where there was some relief given. And that may have, you know, resulted in some slight bumps in twenty-three and twenty-four, when we tried to catch ourselves back up, particularly on the Sewer Department, but that, that gives you a little information there. The point I wanted to make here is every, every one percent rate increase generates from the users about sixteen thousand dollars on the water and about eleven thousand dollars on the Sewer Department. And so if we, and that's every year, obviously, and that does compound. So it, it does get significant. The current rates are listed here with your monthly unit charge. There's fifteen hundred gallons of water included. There's a seasonal rate for water and sewer. The monthly charge for a five-eighths inch meter is twenty-three dollars and change for both water and sewer. And the consumption per one thousand gallons beyond the, what's included is at twelve twenty for water and nineteen for sewer. These reven, these, these rates are applied to, to information that we put in the model, so it's very, very important that we keep, keep track of these. We're using these numbers of accounts in your, in your water and sewer system, because they directly generate in our model the revenue to support the program. You have about, or to support the budgets, you have about five, two thousand plus five-eighths inch year-round meters in the water, and sewer counts about seven hundred and sixty. And as I heard earlier, you know, the sewer group, users, is there's a much smaller pool than there is in the water. You do have some larger meters as well.
And don't they have a higher unit cost?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do. Yes, they do.
We don't have it. We don't see it here. That's what I was, why I was saying.
Yeah. They, they, the rate's higher, just on the previous slide. I mean, the unit cost per thousand is nineteen dollars for the sewer, and it's twelve dollars for the water currently. The other part of the revenue equation in the model that we look at closely is the sales. You're, you're producing water and you're selling the water, and you're, and you're selling that water through, through your meter. The meters are red monthly, and, and we're billing, billing on a monthly basis. We see historical water consumption has gone up a little bit from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty. Maybe that was a, a COVID peak. And then it's been dropping slowly since two twenty, since twenty twenty to two thousand and twenty-three. This is consumption. So this is actual metered data. This isn't what the treatment plant is producing. This is what's going through the meter. It's the basis of what we bill. And we'll talk about that in a minute, because that's different than what the treatment plant's producing. Same with sewer. There was a dip in two thousand and seventeen, and it's been bouncing around a pretty consistent number for the last two years, two or three years. These are important because it helps us project what the next few years would look like. Uh, this is a, a, a graphic I wanted to show, because it is something that we track. We, we didn't update it in this round, but the last time we did was in two thousand and twenty-two. We take a look at what is being produced from the water plant and what is being sold. We take a look at what you're, what you're selling for sewer service and what you're treating at the wastewater plant, so we can tell how much either water we're not able to account, or actually, more importantly, not generating revenue. And what happens on this, uh, chart, we can, we can state what, what Wolfboro's numbers are. And the unaccounted-for water, that's the water that's not being billed. You're producing it at the plant, but you're not sending it through meters, so it's about thirty percent of water that is not accounted for. We don't know where it goes. It's probably leaks. And so that's, that's part of your non-revenue water. So you're generating a lot more water than, than you're actually billing. It's important to track, because the New England industry goal is about fifteen percent. So Wolfboro is, is, is above average there. And I N I is, is, is what leaks into the sewer pipes. You're not obviously generating revenue from it, but you still have to deal with it at your treatment plant, and that's generally been running about forty-seven percent. Also quite high in, in Wolfboro. In the model, we have to look at certain budget assumptions. We used your two thousand and twenty-five budget and information that came from the department for both water and sewer to project forward. We used a five percent increase for twenty-six and a five percent increase for twenty-seven. I will note, historically, when we've done your rate work, we've looked at, we've used three percent going forward. We did use five percent in this model, based on what we thought was more representative of the increases we've seen. So that, that built a little bit more conservatism into the predictions that we came up with. We add, for the Water Department, there was a little bit more capital budgeted, capital outlay in the, in two thousand and twenty-five. And noting here, I heard some conversations about it in the earlier discussions, but there are some general fund offsets. We count for that in the model. In the Water Enterprise Fund, for fire protection, the town is supporting the Enterprise Fund at about three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars a year. We kept that in our model predictions. And for sewer, any debt payments and any capital outlays or any capital reserve contributions due, we, we, we anticipate the revenue coming from the general fund to offset the users. So that is in, that is built into the model. Our goal with the department, and historically, when we do rate work all over the state, we look to have up to six months of operating costs in your, in a fund balance, sort of in your reserves. For the Sewer Department, that's about six hundred and seventy thousand, and water, it's about nine hundred and thirty. So that's a goal that we also establish when we look at, at adjusting the rates. There is some new debt that we carried in the, in the water model for Crescent Water Main, Crescent Lake Water Main. And we note the, some of the new debt coming on for the sewer, but that is not in the, it's in the model, but it's not impacting the users because it's covered by the general fund. These are some of the capital projects that are in the model as well. Some of them, I think, are either paid for reserves or debt, but these, these are accounted for. Water, there were certain treatment plant upgrades. There was some P R V vault work. There was Crescent, this Crescent Lake Water Main, we talked about being new. And then on the sewer, the South Bane Sewer you mentioned, and some sewer pump stations. Those are, those are built into the model. This is just another graphic that gives you an impression of the total budgets for the Water Department since two thousand and twenty-two. They, they go up and down a little bit, but what's important here, that, the orange part is what's paid for by the users. The blue part is what's paid for by the general fund. And I think in the Water Department, it's in the, it's in the eighty-two percent range that's covered by the users. For the hydrant charges, the town pays that, that portion in blue. It's a bigger percentage on the Sewer Department, because there's some significant debt and capital projects. And so this, this graphic represents the portion that's, that's paid for by the general fund for the Sewer, Sewer Department capital projects. These are the actual numbers that we have built into the model. So that's in the, so the Water Department's three hundred and twenty-four thousand for the hydrant services and fire, fire protection services. And for the Sewer Department, the debt and capital outlay is listed here, and it's ranged. It is going up. It's been about a half a million, six hundred thousand for twenty-three, twenty-four, and we're projecting it to go up almost a million dollars by twenty-six to twenty-seven. Another graphic that shows the same thing, but it's the, just to give you the percent. Another graphic that shows the same thing, but it's the, just to give you the percentage of the dollars supported by the users is in blue, and then the percentage on the second way axis here for the water. So 82%-ish of the water budget is covered by the users, the balance by the general fund. And over here, the 60% to 70% has been covered by the users and the rest from the general fund. Okay, so what that turns into when we plug all that into the model and update the projections, we're suggesting that, we're recommending that you raise rates for the water users 2% this year and for the next two years thereafter. So for the next three years, we're projecting a 2% rate increase each year. And we're suggesting, as always, that we review the model every one to two years. Wolfboro has historically done it almost annually, sometimes every other year. And I will make a point on that. I think the question came up to me. But what we normally recommend is we suggest a major rate overhaul study every five years and a check-in every year or two. This is just a check-in. It's normal. That's very common around the work we do around the state. Actually, Wolfboro's a little bit more proactive in how many times there is a check-in. But that has been what we've been doing with Wolfboro since about 2013. Talked about maintaining the target of six months' operating expenses, the fund balance for emergencies. For the sewer department, because of some of the operations, recent operations, we actually have, did run in a deficit in 2024. And so to catch up to that deficit and to start getting the health of the fund balance to our target, we're recommending an increase of 7% in 2025, that's this year, and 5% for each year thereafter through 2027. And again, to check in maybe in the next year or two and to see how those projections play out. What that means, we've calculated sample bills, and this is the, this is in 2024, what a typical user would use for water in Wolfboro, which is, we estimate about 106 gallons per day. So a user in Wolfboro using 106 gallons per day is going to pay $675 for sewer on an annual basis and $500 for water. With the rate increases that we just projected, the water would go up to $541 and the sewer to $722, and these would be the subsequent typical bill if those rate adjustments were followed. That's using 106 gallons a day. That's what we've got, the typical user in Wolfboro uses. We like to compare this to what the state averages are. And so the state does maintain a database on what people statewide use, and they actually, you can look right up and find out what the average rate is statewide. And for water, it's $830, and for sewer, it's $995. The challenge is that's based on 247 gallons. So when we have to calculate what that would be in Wolfboro, not necessarily representative of a typical user in Wolfboro, but it does give you a benchmark to compare against the state. And in both cases, Wolfboro's average bills are above state average, about a little over $1,000 here compared to $830 for the water and $1,650 for sewer compared to state average of just under $1,000. Steve also reached out and asked us to, and I'm just mentioning this here, he asked me to mention it to you, is to look at some build-out work. What does the town of Wolfboro see for growth in its water and sewer service areas so that we can then take a look at what the capacity of both systems are and to see what kind of room you have for the ability to, you know, for new connections and for planning purposes. So we are developing a scope right now that we'll get to Steve for that. And I think that's it. Very open to answer any questions or any thoughts.
Well, I have one comment, and it has to do with how you are wording the $320-something thousand that goes for the hydrant system. And that's very different than the money being paid to the sewer system because the general fund is being billed for having a hydrant system. Without that, the customers should not be paying for the town to have a hydrant system. So it's kind of like what we do with our administrative allocations. We move it over. The offices do the services, and then the enterprise funds are charged for it. This is just going the other way, where the sewer fund is, we're paying it all. And so to me, those are very different coming from the general fund. One is for service, and one is to pay down their capital projects as was approved. So to me, that was one of the things.
And just to make sure I understand, I don't think that impacts the model or the recommendations.
No, I'm just.
You just talked about how we present the information.
Well, it's what we're telling to the public is my issue. Not that your model has any problem. It's, they're very different types of transfers back and forth. The reason I asked about the different size unit cost, somebody who had a 4-inch meter is going to pay $324.57, and this is based on our sewer. Right, so it's a picture, a small picture, but there is this whole other part. A 1-inch, one, and this is in water, they pay $32, a 2-inch, $67. So they're different. So it gives the public knowing that Huggins Hospital, big mains pay way more than the local, smaller users. One of the other things, and I said this to Steve, that I find, and I know this is what they asked you to do, but when you go back and look at the 2022 report, and it talks about non-revenue and unaccounted-for water loss, it lets people understand that the bleeds aren't part of that unaccounted-for water loss. And I felt in here and another year that some of those paragraphs that are really educational would be nice to have in here so we all understand and we can make sure the public understands the difference in that. That's just my personal. I mean, you did what they wanted, but this is what I personally felt was lacking. Does anybody else have any comments?
I have, I'd like to go through this a little bit. Can we go back to page three?
Okay.
Slide three?
Yeah.
Just for some clarification from my.
This one?
Yeah, that one. So I was wondering why, when we see documentation further in this package, we haven't been raising the sewer rates at a higher percentage than the water rates. Everything shows that we take and we, we're at 60% of user rates to support it and we're for the sewer and 80% for the water. So if we are using the same percentage for both, they're very close. I did it. The numbers go, you need to raise it 1.5% for every 1% for the sewer and water for them to stay at the parity that they are right now of 60% being funded by the user rates or 80% being funded by the user rates. And we're not doing that. We're doing it at a much smaller ratio, which means that the amount funded by the user fees is going to continually to drop while the water fee stays at its 80%. So that's one thing that's a little bit concerning.
You're saying the subsidy grows?
Correct.
Well, wait a second here. My, I think that's what, my understanding, and we get it from the audit, that the revenue that we take in, in the waterfront and the expenses, we come back, we have a surplus left over. We've had that year after year. So I'm not quite sure why you're saying.
Based on what he said, he said, I'm talking about user rates. The user rates show, and he said it, that 80% of the fund is paid for by user rates. That's, I mean, that's what I'm.
The water fund.
For water, yeah, the water fund. And for the sewer fund, it's 60%. And if we continue to use these type of recommendations for percentage increase.
The subsidy grows.
Correct. You're going to end up having.
What is the water fund, how's the water fund subsidizing? Well, how's the general fund?
No, it's not subsidizing. What I'm saying is.
Well, that's what he just used.
If the percentage is stay the same, we will stay at the 80% for the water fund, but the sewer fund could go down more. I'm saying that we might need to, and you can see that because guess what? When you go to where they did our projected rates, they, all of a sudden, we have a jump now where they're saying that we're going to be going up 7% and 5% compared to where water is only going to be going up 2% a year, correct?
Right.
Is that kind of a catch-up?
That is a catch-up. That 7% is a catch-up. So I don't think it's easy to correlate the percentages. And by the way, that 80% and that 60% calculation is a back calculation. All it is, is presenting based on your policy and rules on what, I'm going to use the wrong term, the offsets are, the general fund contributions are relative to total budget. So it's not something that we design into the model. That's just a representation of where.
That's a good observation. If you go to 12, to slide 12.
Yeah.
You can, you can see, great graph. You can show the difference that's paid by the general fund and the, and he said it's 82% about now, and if you look at it, it stays constant at about that. Now go to the next slide. You see that, this is what I just said. It shows that we are keeping the same amount paid by the users is staying flat, and paying by the general fund is going up.
Right, but what, the difference in this is that that's a hydrant fee. And the reason why it's not in the water is because there's X amount that's put in there every year, and it is constant. So that is going to say the same. That's the in-out. Your comments about the sewer changes by whatever the projects are, but the water is consistent. It's been at 3.
324.
324, $324,000. It's 10%, and it's been that in the budget, I would say, for the last three or four years. It's consistent for the hydrant.
I guess I'm confused, and so that stack bar chart, please.
Yep. Oops, I'm going forward. I gotta go back.
So if I look at that stack bar chart.
Yeah.
The projection says on a percentage basis, general fund prospectively is picking up more of the total than it ever did in the past.
Yes.
And so, and that, so I think I understand what you're saying, but I'm just looking at this stack bar chart and saying that that stack bar chart is telling me the general fund as a percent of total over time is picking up more of the.
Sewer fund, of the sewer fund.
And that's because.
And not of the water.
No, that's what we're saying. That's what we're saying. We're saying the water is staying consistent.
Because there's a set number we can control.
May I interject? So to Linda's point on the water, the one prior to that, at 324, it's steady, that's hydrant, that's done.
Correct.
The sewer, the reason why the general fund portion is gaining ground every year going forward is because of the projects that we're going to do, which takes that on, period. That's why that number goes up.
We agree.
Yeah.
We agree. The problem is, is not, I don't care about anything except the users are paying a smaller proportion of the whole payment compared to the general fund.
Yes.
Now, the general fund is taxing everybody in the town of Wolfboro. The users are paying the rate, which is orange, which means the percentage of the people that don't have sewer are going to be paying more out of their taxes for the sewer system than the people that are on the sewer that are getting funded by it. So theirs is going to go up, but the people who are funding it from the general population, theirs is going to go up too.
Correct. Because.
And at an unequal amount compared to the users' rates.
Right, but the only way to offset that would be to take his proposal of 7, 5, and 5.
And keep going.
And jack it.
Correct. You know what I would love to see, and this is going to be.
Actually, let me just, what I would need to know is, the direction we're given is that all debt service is allocated to the general fund in purpose of the model. I would need a policy change or a guidance change. Somebody would have to tell me that if you don't want to do that, then some of the debt service would go on the users.
And is that what you're talking about? Is that what you're looking at? You want to change that? I'm asking you a question.
What I would love to see is a projection of what our rates would have to do in the next five, six, whatever number of years you want to get the sewer to be up to the 82% of the water. I would love to see that projection. I know it's going to be painful as hell. People are going to see the rates jumping like crazy, but I would like to just see it so I know. Then can you go to 18?
All right, I'll put that on the agenda, that you want to talk about raising the sewer. Nope, nope, nope.
Nope, don't put words in my, I didn't say raising. No, no, no.
Brian, Brian, wait. I will.
I want to see.
Brian, I will reword it. Don't get into an argument. I'm trying to get what you want.
Well, just ask, and I'll explain it.
I was using what, I was asking you whether you want me to put this on the agenda, and you went off at me. So I am trying to get the wording you want to talk about on the agenda.
Correct. I would like to see what a projection would look like, this is theoretical only, of what we would have to do for a rate structure to get the sewer to be equivalent to the water rate. That's all I want to say, and that's the way I want to say it.
Okay, that's what I'll do. Did you? Do you have a question? Okay.
Going to scare the heck out of you.
The last one is for 18. I just want to understand the difference between the 106 gallons and the 247. Is that because large municipalities have big businesses that use more water or?
No, not at all. What it is, is the state had to pick a number.
Okay.
To reach out to every town in the state who has a water and sewer system and says, if you have this much water, what's your bill? If you use this much water, what's your bill? That way, when you compare between communities, you're comparing apples to apples.
Okay.
But that's not what.
Wolfboro uses.
Not what people use, certainly not in Wolfboro, so.
It's a model you use to normalize.
Had to normalize it.
Yeah, it's a normalization of your model. I got it.
So, you know, what we're telling you in this slide is, the chart tells you what we think the rates would be for a typical user in Wolfboro. That just, on the right-hand side, just compares it to the state average. It's kind of a, it's another theoretical and not a real estate.
So that people understand that in Wolfboro, $722 would be a bill for 2025, not the $1,150.
That's correct.
Okay. And the only thing that makes it a little confusing is, again, that we use an average of 106 and the state uses a baseline number of 247. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, and if I didn't put that up, you'd say, how do we compare against the state average?
Yeah, and no, and I understand. I just wanted to make sure that people at home understood the difference because that's a lot to digest quickly.
Understood, yeah.
That's all, I think that's all I have.
Okay, Paul, do you have some things you wanted to say?
Just one or two. Chart nine. This is going to be, this is not going to be on you, but it's that one, the one that says, that chart effectively says we stink, that we leak more water than other people do and we.
That's a goal. I'm not going to tell you, you're not alone. That's a goal.
Okay, so we're all bozos on the bus. I got it. So.
I will say that you're probably on the, you know, you're on the worst end of.
We're on the wrong side of perfect.
Well, this is what I'll tell you, Paul. When I came on the board, it was 50%. So we've come a long way.
There has been efforts, yes.
So 30% is going someplace. It's like, it's like, you know, in the electric department, some percentage of the electrons fly off into space. I got it. What I, and this is not for you, but this is maybe for Steve and not for here, not for here, okay? Because it's one of these business questions. What capital projects, it would be great to explain to our voters, what capital projects are we working on to get that number smaller on the water side and by how much?
Every one that he listed on this screen. So how we are doing this going forward is we are starting with our oldest.
Now, the ones, let me, I'm sorry, I was opaque in my question. On the things that we're putting in front of the voter to have them vote on, sewer pump stations and all that kind of stuff, can we draw a straight line from those capital projects and the ones that are currently in flight that says, when those things are completed, let's pick a number, that. that 30 is gonna go to-
28.
27.
Well, that's no, that's not gonna happen.
That's-
Well, either we can show something or we're not working on the right stuff. Tell me I'm wrong.
You're half-right.
Good one, good one.
Here's how this works, Paul. We can isolate, we can listen, we can an educated guess on where leaks are based on ages of main and blah, 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 right? So that is how we have built. It also coincides with our lead, everything that we have, our infrastructure is old. This right here is a perfect example of the age of the infrastructure.
And thank you for that.
No, hang on. No, I'm working, I'm getting there. So with our older stuff, River Street, pretty sure there's some leaks there. Mill Street Pump Station, that's not gonna do anything with us. It's not a main. South Main Sewer, when we redo this in two years, yes. This water main out here, yes. Do you know what I mean? So those projects that we are doing now and in the future should take care of these numbers.
My esteemed colleague down there just, we shook his head and he's saying that's not, we're not gonna be able to get there. I'd like to ask if we can make an effort, both in water and sewer, to draw a straight line, and I don't wanna make it up. You know, we can't make stuff up because we could check on it. I wanna draw, be able to draw a straight line that says, if we appropriate and fund a project, it is reasonable to expect that the 47 number goes to someplace else over a period of time. That's our ambition. Which means we gotta go look for the leaks, which means we gotta go look for the INI, which means we gotta get out there and whatever. Because the reason, a different analysis than what Brian did, but I just, you know, ran back and Casey builds my little dashboard for me. I just ran back and looked at the operating deficits over just sewer, since 2019. After we pay all the bills and do all this stuff, we're still, pardon the word, flushing a 2.4 million cumulative operating loss. So my objective is to go right at that number. We can do it two ways, three ways. We can raise rates and drive people a little unhappy, but still not fix this. Okay? We can try to fix this and try to keep some stabilization on the cost structure. And now the big one, which Linda asked the question and I would like us to do as well is, I really would like to know for water and sewer, more water than sewer initially because I think it's an easier thing to do. How much capital investment do we have to make in order to get the water function? How many more customers do we need in the water function to break even? It's an operating leverage question. How many more do we need? Which says, how much more capital do we have to spend? Which says, how much more capacity do we have to have? I would like to know that answer. Because we may not get out of this problem by having a finite, small, little set of customers and just kinda, and trying to do that. We may get out of this problem by expanding the size of the infrastructure. Okay? It's a utility model. It's a utility model. It's buried, okay? And if we could just know that over time, that would be a fun thing, I shouldn't say fun, just for novelty, that would be a fun thing to know. And we'll get to sewer later, but that's a monster of a question because the next tranche on sewer is all the stuff that we talked about.
I just got one quick one.
Let me, I wanna make sure-
Was I finished?
Do you have anything, or do you? Before I put my big mouth in?
I would just add that I think I'm kind of understanding Paul's approach here. You're wanting to know if we do a certain project, what's gonna be our return on, not return on investment, but how much of a gain we're gonna get on it. That's, you can't really project that. You're gonna be able to, when you say this water line now is finishing up on South Main here, you're gonna get results that you'll be able to quantify after the fact because you will see meter reduction up at the plant, the difference from what it was before the line was replaced to after over a period of time with your customers still drawing the same amount that they're drawing off of it. And that's gonna give you the quantitative numbers you're looking for. So, because we don't know how many leaks are in there, how much we're losing per day in a line like that. It's had a couple thousand feet long, 2,500, something like that. You know, there's a series of number joints in there and stuff and the pipe bells and everything, but... So you're gonna be able to get these results after the projects are done and completed. Then you'll be able to see a trend going in the reduction. I think of the water system, to your point, I don't think an expansion is gonna do anything. I think we're pretty much have it figured out to be self-sufficient there because we're gaining, we're putting money away for these projects, stuff like that. So I think the water system's good. And the sewer, we're actually, we're locked in on a fixed amount that we're allowed to dispose of, and that's capped. We cannot go over that. So in that system there, in my opinion, we really need to work on the INI and the system there to cut that down. Then we can, that's gonna save our, you know, the plant from being overtaxed over burden and our RIB sites and the spray fields. So that's more important to me to get that coming down because that's gonna really, it's affecting, you know, the planning boards asking for, you know, what kind of expansion can we do there? If these subdivisions are coming in and stuff like that. And that's where we're tighter on our, on what we can add into the system right now because we're pushing the limits and stuff there. So it's kind of my two cents worth.
Yeah, and the INI is really a program we should be doing all the time. You fix one manhole and you go through this and you need to be back in a certain period of time where the INI is going to be back. And for a while, we tried to have an INI in our project, but then you had to do the spray fields and, you know, so it becomes, how much can you afford? I think there's a misconception, and I'm with Brad. The water fund, you're doing 82%, but if we got rid of that payment for the hydrant, that would be paying for the full amount. Because the hydrant is the only thing that's being paid for by the government. So that fund, and we can look to see if the project helps with our unaccounted-for water loss, that fund is one of the ones that's working. The sewer fund, and if you look at, you have 700 and some odd customers and the cost of the projects. And we can raise the rates, but that's gonna be on the hospital, that's gonna be on the businesses down, that's gonna be a big hit in the downtown core that we all use. And we'll pay that in what we have to buy. And so we've played around with this before. I have no problem looking at it again, Brian. You know, but there's a give and take on both of it. It's just not, it's just not a figure.
So I just wanna finish if I could, Linda. I was before him.
I know, I just, I told him.
So we're having two discussions. One is, let's not scare the bejesus out of the ratepayers, and I'm okay with that. I think that's, you know, that's not a prudent thing to do. And with the highest amount of respect, and I have to, you know, I have to say that because I do respect Brad a lot, but I'm beswizzled as to how we can be, I hate to say twice as bad, but, you know, New England average on goal is 15%. So are we missing something? Are there people out there in other parts of New England? Maine, Hampshire, Vermont? Are there other people out there that are doing some things that are hunting to get unaccounted-for water under control? And if the answer to that is yes, are we bringing those best practices back to this town and saying, "Here's the kind of water projects they do, and here's the kind of water projects we do, and here's how we can get our due to look like their due, and we can get that number down." Because that'll keep rates stable as opposed to, you know, raising rates and, no disrespect, Brad, no disrespect, but saying, "We can't fix this. It's out of our control." It is out of our control, in my personal opinion. No, I just think we gotta dig into it.
Go ahead.
May I?
And then Brian, I'll go to you.
I should probably let Keith answer this one, but from my perspective, from my years of working in New Hampshire and doing water mains, the sign when you come into town, it's the oldest summer resort in the country. It's one of the oldest water systems. So when you have mains that are well over 100 years old, as we do, and then you have the majority of these towns that are not 100-year-old mains, that's why you're gonna get that difference. So until we can peck away at this stuff, which is what we're doing, or we go full bore and we start ripping up everything and replace all these to do this, that number is gonna come down because that's our goal and we work on it every day. Chris and his crew are out there, they look for leaks all the time. But it's gonna take a little bit of time to do that. You either take the time to do it or you need a lot of money to do it. And a lot of money means a lot of money. So it's trying to find that balance of 30% down to get it to 15, or we could rip the Band-Aid off, to use one of your phrases, and go for it.
Did I say, ever say, rip the Band-Aid off?
I heard you, I think.
I don't think.
Oh, Brian.
Okay, so one thing. When you're trying to fix a 1978 Nova and you're doing the best you can, I don't blame Underwood Engineering and the people maintaining our plant. I understand. A quick question is, what is the New England average? Do we know that number?
I don't, but I do this work all over the state and I would say there's very few that are at the 15%.
Correct. So maybe the average might be in the 20s?
Maybe, yeah, I don't know if I have a number for you. But I would say 10, 15, 20% of the systems might be at that goal.
Okay.
Maybe that's a better way to give you some sort of perspective. The town of Wolfboro's done a lot to look at this. We've been involved with it. So this is not a new issue and it's why we keep front and center. I think there's a lot we can dust off and, you know, and refresh on what's been done, where the leaks are. I mean, there's certain information. My, I will tell you, like Steve said, is we do this all over the state, it's very rare that an INI project or a water main replacement project is cost-effective.
I don't know what that means.
What's that?
I don't know what that means.
That the return on the investment is there for you. So that it may cost you more to fix it than you will see in a return in savings.
So if I, just to prosecute that-
And I'm not, I'm saying that generally, I'm not saying that for-
That's an argument that says, "Let's not do it because it doesn't make financial sense."
That's not what the argument is.
But that's what it is.
No, it isn't. What I'm saying is that there's been a lot of work done on that and there continues to be a lot of work done on that. I'm saying the reality of it is, it will probably likely raise rates to do it. Not an argument to not do it. I'm just, I just wanna make sure that, you know, that there's an understanding. Every year, there was recommendations for $400,000 in INI projects. But it was gonna raise rates, period. And so, and I think there was decisions along the way that they, there was other priorities at the time.
Other things we had to do in that whole system. And I think we also, if I remember, don't we have something that we can hook on pipes that we can tell where their leaks are? We bought that as we started to try to get from 50 down to 30 and we have those devices. And don't we also send cameras down our sewer system to try to find leaks? I mean, it's not like we're saying, "Oh, they're there, let's just sit back." We have a program to try to find them because the sooner we find them, the better off we are.
Correct. And back to this slide. Addressing the INI is going to be, is infinitely easier than the water. Because you can pop a manhole cover and you can see it. You can see out here in heavy rains in the spring when the water level's very high, you pop the covers out there, the water comes in. You know, we can only purge it up so much, they need to be replaced. We shoot the cameras down. We spent quite a bit of time this summer down through this line, sculpting this whole thing underneath the bridge out to Mill Street in preparation of the sewer main project. So we can identify the joints. It's easy, it's much easier for the INI because you can see it. Water main shooting, you can't shoot a camera up a live water main and see if it's leaking from the inside out. It doesn't really work.
I have one more question for Steve. The question that a citizen came to me and said, "For our sewer extension down on Forest and Sewell Road, how many people should hook up and how many have hooked up?"
I'd have to look at that number. I wanna say there was 22 people that were, are required to hook up in a specified period of time. And I wanna say a third of them have, Chris, does that sound right to you? Ish. Somewhere maybe four or six people have done it so far.
Because I had somebody come to me, and I don't know where they got their numbers. They said there was 38 that were supposed to be hooked up and only four had. And I don't know if those numbers are true.
No, I mean, we have it. I can get you that information, I have it back at the office.
Because I'd like to correct misinformation.
I can't pull that number off the top of my head.
I don't blame you.
Without-
Yeah, you shouldn't have everything.
I got a lot in there.
You can't.
Is there any other questions or can we move on? Anybody else? Thank you for listening to our debate as we try to move forward with this. And Steve, I'm assuming that you will come at another meeting with a chart like this with the new rates in it so we can approve them?
Yes. So right now, we have, I believe Jim has us on for the second one of March, and we will update all of the rates and the fees. And if you'd like, we can put their proposed rates in that at the same time and do it all at once. Is that what?
That's what I'm thinking of. That's usually what we get, is we get what's going to be and somebody would pick up and we'd have everything on that one sheet.
Fantastic, we can do that.
And that's, we'll make them, the sooner the better. Because every month we don't get it done, your projections have problems.
I believe we're on for the second one in March.
Turn the lights on.
Okay.
I gotta turn the lights on. Thank you.
He's got one question. The light turner on.
For me?
Who, did you want him? Yeah, I have myself some.
Please tell me to turn the lights on. And Linda, you asked water and sewer capacity question. That was your chart, your question?
Yeah.
Are we clear on what our ask is? Should we have some kind of a, here's what we can do, here's how we intend to approach this water and sewer capacity question so that we don't debate data when we get the data and say, "Well, that's not what we want." Can we have some kind of a clarity discussion?
Just have, is there a, Steve, are you giving him a written? Then just provide us with that written information.
We will write a scope and we'll approach it typically how we approach this in other communities. Share with Steve if he wants, if he needs to share with you. You'll see what we're proposing to do. You'll have a chance, Steve will have a chance at that point to comment on it.
Yeah, as Brad said, there's a lot of asks about this and they come from different, you know, influences.
And I might, I'll chat with Steve about some other options just listening tonight that may, could be absorbed into that scope that you may be interested in.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Linda.
What I'll do is I'll make sure I forward that to you guys before we proceed to make sure that addresses everything that you're looking for. And I also wanna throw out there, there's two parts of this. There's plant capacities and then there's distribution slash collection. So when current is taken care of, well, if our warrants pass, part of that plant upgrade analysis and those things is doing a capacity for the plant existing and what it could be. So they are taking care of the sewer plant processing section of this. These guys are gonna work on us with all of our water and our build-out for the sewer services since it, water sewer lines, it makes sense.
So you're doing the build-out analysis and we're going to do, when we did it last time, we only did it on the road, but this time we want it to go into the backland because that's where the developments are coming now.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Now, next item on the agenda is the commercial vehicle landing permit, Big Sandy Two.
Move to issue, oh wait, a little early.
I know it's late, and we were late last night. Is there anybody here for this? I guess not. It's from the Y. They come in a couple of times. My understanding, there are two of them. One, the first one is what they usually do, and then the second one is at a later time. I think they maybe have come in July.
Yeah, Tuesday, July 1st, and Tuesday, August 26th.
But there are two permits, and as Amy, I thought there was supposed to be another thing in here, that they.
Start date July 1, end date July 26, approximately two hours, 2:15 to 4:15 in the afternoon. Have we ever had any issues? I'm not familiar with these.
That's, that's just the time, but they're not coming in.
No issues with these folks?
Well, one of them says 12 weeks, the other one says nine weeks. Nine trips. So that's, this one would mean, there would be, I don't know how you get nine.
Yeah. Should be an even number.
Yeah, I, I think this, if you look at the second one, if, it, it says that a round trip is two landings. I'm not quite sure how you get nine. And either should be eight or 10.
One round trip consists of two landings, so they're doing it as a estimated number of landings. Nine round trip landings is the way I think they're wording it. So they're considering that, that would be 18.
So that should be, there should be 18, they should, that should be 18 then.
Yeah, and then the 12.
Is that 24?
Would be 24, yep.
That's, that's 12. Yeah, I think they mean 12 days, which is going back and forth twice. And the other one is nine days, which would be going back and forth, you know, and landing 18 times.
Since this isn't going to start until, when is it, 1 July?
I'd like to table this, because there was, there was some confusion when I was talking to Amy, because one was what they usually do, and two was something else they were adding.
Yeah, I second your one table motion. Motion to table.
Second.
All right. Paul, Brad, any further discussion? This is to table, all those in favor?
Aye.
Next item is the boat agent agreement with Goodhue Boat Company. We started this, I want to say, about seven years ago, and it has been a very good deal for the town. And we have gotten a significant number of boat registrations through them. So does anybody have any other comments, questions?
I recommend it.
Okay, Paul made a motion to recommend it. Do I have a second? Dave has second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Next item is the hawkers and peddlers. We have sites one, two, and three. We have here, we have Hot Dog Bob at two, the one down by the docks, and one on Main Street, down by the bridge. And we have Alley Capps, which is across from the railroad avenue side near South Main Street. And our favorite one is number four. The sidewalk going into Cape Park, and it never seems to do well. And we do not, that's back out to be advertised. Only thing that I saw was, it seems like Alley Capps still needs to provide us with her license.
Yep. So let's move to approve, issue Hawker and Peddler's permit to location number one, and to location number two. That would be Hot Dog Bob.
How does other people feel?
I, I wouldn't mind if he amended that, so it includes number three contingent upon her delivering us a license before the season starts.
No objection.
Okay.
To Amy.
Could you seconding that?
So now we've got it, we're going to do one, two, and three. And three will be contingent upon receiving a, the, a copy of her license.
Yep.
Yep.
And also paying the fee.
Yep.
Okay?
Second.
I think the fee has been paid.
No, the fee, I don't have any.
It has a check number written on it, on the sheet there.
Does it have a check number? She didn't? Oh, okay, she gave us a copy of one.
Right, but not the other one.
Okay, all right, so it's not the, it's just the license.
Yep, yeah, because she has check number 156.
Okay. So Brian made the motion.
No, Paul made.
Paul made the motion, Brian made the second, okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Recap of the deliberative session. I thought it was a good session. You know, it felt like, more like an old town meeting than we've had in a long time, because we had a lot of discussion and different points of view. I could have had it not last quite so long.
It was awful short.
Yeah, yeah. So what you, what I, what was handed out to you is the recap of the money that was cut from the general fund. There was $235,836. That came out of the town manager's budget for an employee. And we see all the different salary, the phone stipend, the payroll tax, the retirement, the health insurance, the dental, the life, and unemployment. And then the last one was the money coming out of the hockey rink. So the tax rate prior to taking the $235,836 was $6.19. And after we took that out, it's $6.10. So that's the financial recap. Is there any comments from the board in terms of the deliberative session? Hearing none, we'll move right on. We're moving on to other business.
They did cut the, the budget by one-half of 1%.
Thank you, one-half of 1%. But I think, you know.
And they got to speak.
And, and they, well, no, I think, to me, it was, it gave us an opportunity to hear from the public.
Correct.
And it wasn't just one person, there was a whole bunch. And I found that just, you know, I, I really enjoyed it. I thought it was good for the board to hear it.
Lots of different, lots of different points of view.
Yes, I, yeah, I thought that was very good. The, I did have one suggestion, that maybe we wanted to start it at 5:00.
2:30.
So we may look at next year, trying to move it earlier to start, so we don't go so late. So that, that really makes a lot of sense. All right, other business? Nobody. Town manager report, he's not here, so that takes care of that. Committee reports. I'll start down here with Dave.
I wanted to say deliberative session. Otherwise, I didn't have any.
Okay, Brad?
Yeah, same with me, deliberative session.
Okay, Paul?
Yeah, deliberative session.
Brian?
I had the deliberative session, but I knew I had something else.
I had something else too, I just don't want to.
No, you know, you and I went to the hazardous waste meeting, Paul.
Oh, yeah, Linda and I went to the hazardous waste meeting in Alton.
Yep.
We, 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 can I speak to that?
Sure.
Thank you for reminding me that. And this, I'm pointing my finger at Suzanne Ryan right now. I personally learned from the folks in Alton how much Sarah Silk did, and never took a lick of credit for it. Selfless. It was unbelievable. I hate to use that word, because it sounds like somebody in Washington. It was, it was, it was an amazing conversation with the folks in Alton, how much Sarah did for hazardous waste, for each other. And so thank you for reminding me, that was a, that was a good meeting.
Well, and I think the other part of it is, we're going to get a copy of the inter municipal agreement to get, understand it. Of course, she understood it all. And that we're going to try to have hazardous waste collections in 2025. How we pull it off, how it all is going to look, we don't know. But they've, the group made a commitment to have that happen. So that makes me feel good, that we're just not losing that. I'll do mine afterwards. Brian?
So I had a heritage commission meeting. I had, I hate, I like to say it, my favorite meeting of, of the month always, senior lunch. I love senior lunch. And then I had the deliberative session.
Well, and I, I'll add something here. We all went to Terry's retirement party.
Oh, and Terry.
Which was a lovely thing. And Paul and I also worked on the town planners ad, and revised it, and tried to sell Wolfboro more with the job. And it hopefully will be out on the, shortly.
Anytime.
I don't think we're hooked up, so I don't have anything from the press. Public input.
I don't even know, I don't know if I can remember what I came down for. It was so late last night. Well, I'll start with the first one relevant to Sarah. I tried sending Amy an email this morning, last night, whatever. I'm wondering if you would be receptive, if Amy is willing, and maybe Pat, if she's willing, to put together something, I'll put some seed money in to see if I can get something started for a sign down there for Sarah at the hazardous waste. Bring it to you, and, yeah, okay. The other thing was, oh, the changes that were made at the deliberative session, the town that, what's your name?
Brian?
I'm so tired, because I stayed up even after that. The town, the, the town that Brian came from, in their annual town report, they used to put a sheet in there that showed the changes that were made at the deliberative session. Because your town report comes out with the old news. There's been changes made. It's something you might want to consider. You've got a lot of paperwork over there, some of it could probably be reused. But it's done in some towns, it's perfectly allowed. A one-sheet page that's inserted in, that was a second thought.
What town was I from?
Now, now you're causing your problems.
The third thing was, what was the third thing? Oh, just in a comment on the water and sewer thing. It's like, it's like listening to a rerun. And I appreciate Paul trying to make headway. And there is, there is, there is a way to get a little bit improved, but none of us will live long enough to see it. Looking at Dave grinning down at the other end. But I'll say to water, what, what is inbred, inbrained in my brain, branded in my brain is David Ford. Economy to scale, you got to have more hookups. Well, you could do that with water, but you aren't going to be able to do it with sewer, because sewer is, sewer, like, it's a billion-dollar project. I mean, sewer is just something that we're just going to have to chip away at. But, but economy to scale on water, that was David Ford. I feel like I learned it in the eighth grade, and I still have it in my memory bank. And then the last thing is, I'm glad to see that you're cognizant of the fact about undesignated fund ballots. And somehow, along the way, it got dropped and by the wayside, and that you realized to pick it up again. And I think the new policy says that. By the way, I've got some information to add to what you guys have put in, and I'll get copies made and leave it for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to give us any input? Sure, come on up.
Steve, what, I forgot my name. Gary Brockman, I live in Wolfboro with my wife Lucy. And before I get started, I'd like to pass this out.
Sure. Thank you.
Get my notes there. Pull this down, is that song, Gary?
Yes, we, yeah, if you can get it down, we can hear you better.
There you go. There you go, is that all right?
Yeah.
The reason I'm here tonight is because back on 10/9/24, I had a leak in my cellar. And thank God, my plumber was there working, redoing my furnace. And he noticed that there was a leak in there. And it was on the outs, the, the town meter was where it came into it. Oh, thank you. That good? So anyway, so anyway. We, the plumber notified me upstairs, and I came down and saw the whole thing. So he had to call the town in to shut the water off, so my other plumber could fix the, the, the leak in the thing. And it was a leak before the, the town meter, so, because when the, when the town got there to turn the, the water off, the workers showed up, and the town truck, working hours of that day was, you know, in the morning. And he, he was rather a rude type person. So anyway, they repaired the leak, and my, my plumbers are great. I mean, I, I'm very fortunate, and they fixed the leak. And so my plumbers, who are, you know, they're insured to 100%, turned the water back on to see, make sure that there were no more leaks in it, which, which there wasn't. So then like I said, they were licensed, and they're great people. I'm very fortunate to have these type of people around, and they're very good, anyway. So the town, the town person came back to check on the leaks and all that stuff, and and, and turned the water back on. But the plumber that I had is, is a licensed plumber. And like I said, he turned the water back on himself, just so he knows that the leak was fixed. And the, the town guy that came over on a town truck, and it was during the day, came in and said, we had no right to do that. And, you know, how else is he going to check it if he didn't, you know, turn the water back on? And so, anyway. It, it goes on from there, and he, he's not a very, he's a, he's a kind of person, and I deal with people a lot, he's a kind of person, if you give him an inch, they think they're powerful. And that's not the way I like to do it, especially when he was talking to my wife. I couldn't be there when he turned back on, because I was working. But, you know, he's, he was going on how we can't do that. And, and I got, I got licensed plumbers working on my cellar, but, you know, paying them hundreds of dollars. I spend, anything on my house or my property, I spend locally. I don't care if it's from electricians, painters, or anything. And it, it just kind of obsesses me. So anyway. Where am I here? So I, I get a bill, and that's what you guys got right there. And I'm, I'm looking it over, and I go, wow, that's, that's kind of high. I said, maybe I got a leak still down there. So I went down and checked it. Then I looked over the bill again. And they had a a $50 charge on there, that had, it didn't say what it was for or anything. It just said $50. And so usually I just pay the bill, and I put it in a little box outside. So I went in to find out, and I talked to a guy that, that takes care of the bills and stuff. And his, his, his comeback was that people are abusing the waterworks. That's why that $50 is on there. It doesn't say that on the bill. It just says, the people are abusing the water company. And I'm saying, how, how am I, how am I abusing the water company? And it, where does it say on that bill what that $50 is for? And so he told me, I can't remember the gentleman's name down there at the, where I pay the bills, to go to, to the selectmen. And so that's why I'm here. And I don't, I don't pay bills. If somebody says I owe $50, I want to know why. And if, if, if my plumber, who is licensed, top shelf, turned, turned it back on, and if he hadn't have turned it back on, it would have cost me $100. And now I get another bill in the mail today, and they've upped that $50 to $55. And for what, for what? It's nothing, it's blank. All it says is $55. All it says is $55. And I'm not going to pay a bill, I don't think anybody's going to pay a bill that doesn't say what it's for. So, anyway, this is where I'm at with this whole thing, and it's been really tearing me up thinking about it. You know, it's, you know, I've been in this town, I have a business in this town for 27 years. And I have the greatest people at town, my electricians, I don't care if it's electricians or painters or carpenters or sign makers or whatever it is. I make sure they're from Wolfboro, New Hampshire. And this is unacceptable. And the way, the guy that works for the town water, I'm not sure what his name is, was not a nice person, and especially to my wife. So, I think there's something that should be done about the way they do the billings. I mean, I'm not going to pay a bill that doesn't tell me what it's for. So, therefore, what, what, what it comes to, and I've been here before in Wolfboro, is that it's kind of like double dipping. What's good for some is not good for others. And I know for a fact that people have had their water shut off lately and was not even charged for it. So, that's my story. And I'm not going to pay a bill that doesn't tell me what it's for. And I, and I don't see how I neglect the water company. I'm paying two, two registered legalized plumbers and heaters and all that stuff like I do with everybody else. And so, how was, how was I, how was I neglecting the water company? And that's about it. Any questions for me?
The board will look into it. When I look here, I don't see what labeled to that. I understand your concern. I see no labels, so you know what that money is. And I think the board will look into finding out what it was.
Yeah.
We'll get, yep.
And I think, I think the gentleman that came to see too, he should be, you know, like I said, you know, you give some people a little bit of power, and it goes to their head. And this is one that does. And I, and I think that should be looked into too. Because my wife didn't, didn't have me treated that way, and I certainly didn't, and neither did my plumbers that were there. So, thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay. Any other public input? Hearing none, can I have a motion, David, to adjourn?
Will we adjourn?
Second.
And I have a motion by Dave, second by Brad. All those in favor?
Aye.